Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Good evening, I'm James Offsink, Vice Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, and I'm convening a hearing tonight of the TSCC. We're holding this hearing to discuss Measure 26215, a measure that Portland Public Schools has put forward for the November ballot. The commission is a neutral body in this matter and conducts the hearing for the public benefit. Because it will be decided by voters on November 3rd, we will take no formal action at this meeting. First, I would like the TSCC commissioners and staff to introduce themselves and say if they have any conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest with the district. I'll start. Again, I'm James Offsink, Vice Chair of the TSCC. This is my, I think, fifth year as a commissioner. When I'm not commissioning, I work at Oregon Health and Science University, NIT, and my local high school here is Franklin.
Good evening, I'm Margot Norton, I'm also a fifth year on the commission. My career was in government finance. When I'm not commissioning, I'm retired. And my high school attendance area is grants.
Good evening, my name is Mark Wibbald. This is my fourth year on the commission. And my day job, I'm the Senior Policy Analyst for the President's of Portland State University, and I live just down the street from Fabian. And I have no perceived or, you know, conflicts of interest.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Harmony Kida. This is my first year with the TSCC. I am a former teacher, I taught middle school math and science, and currently work in curriculum and assessment on K-12 science. I have two kids, I have a four-year-old and I have a first grader at Atkinson near Franklin. And I am also the PTA president at Atkinson. I have no real or perceived conflicts of interest with the district.
And then Chair Behringer, I see that you're on, if you wanted to just introduce yourself and say what...
This is weird, I was on for 20 minutes and then I got kicked off somehow. I'm David Behringer, I'm the Chair of the TSCC, and I welcome you all to this hearing, and thank you, James, for getting us kicked off. With that, has the staff introduced themselves yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
My name is Craig Gibbons, I'm Chair to the staff. And I am right down the street from North Eugene High School, my alma mater, where I have been for the duration of this pandemic.
Hi, and I'm Tony Burchard, staff.
Great, thank you. With that, with the school district representatives, please introduce themselves.
My apologies for interrupting, I was hearing staff and thinking of PPS staff. So Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz. And we have, I'll have asked the board to go ahead. Board Chair, if you'd like to start with introductions.
This is Max, and I am Ailey Lowry, I'm the Chair of the School Board. And I am mom to one high schooler and two cats who want to be on part of this hearing tonight. Let's go ahead in alphabetical order by first name, so we'll start with Amy.
Sorry about that, good evening, everybody, nice to see you again. My name is Amy Constam, I have served on the board since 2015 and am a parent of three former PPS students.
Guess my next, here, Lowry, hi, Andrew Scott, I'm a PPS Board Member for Zone 1, parent of two PPS students and frequent attendee at TSCC hearings.
You are.
And I saw that Director Moore was on the call at one point, Rita, are you there?
Yes, sorry, I was waiting for Michelle. Rita Moore, School Board's fourth year, parent of a PPS graduate and a former CBRC member. Hi, Harmony.
All right, and that's all the board that are here tonight. Like I said, Director Vermette.
We have Student Representative Mathew.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Student Representative Shu, thank you, Jonathan.
Hello, I'm Nathaniel Shu, I'm Student Representative to the Board of Education, and I am a senior at Jefferson.
Okay, and with that, I think that I will ask staff, as they are responding to questions, to introduce themselves as they respond to a question at this point.
Okay. Thank you all for attending, would you like to make any introductory remarks before we start our questions?
Chief Operations Officer Dan Young will give us an overview of the bond.
Absolutely, good, good evening, everyone, Dan Young, Chief Operating Officer. So yeah, I'll provide a real quick overview of the scope of this bond, and if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt and ask anytime. To give a little context, well, I think with some of our answers to questions, talk a little more detail, but the district has a long-range facilities plan they adopted back in 2012. And what that does is it identifies a plan of really a multi-billion dollar, multi-decade plan of updating the entire capital portfolio over a long term. And it targets going out for a series of bonds over this period of time. So the district has passed a bond in 2012, passed another one in 2017, so this is really a third step and was intended to be a longer-term process. We started having preparations for this well over a year ago and started some public meetings here late last fall and looked at a lot of different materials and information that helped inform the bond package that you have before you today. So the total that is in the bond for November is a little over 1.2 billion. We, for sake of ease and discussions, categorize the scope of work into a number of different categories. One is modernizations. So there's over $600 million in modernization work that is in this bond package. That includes funds necessary to complete two active projects we have right now, the Benson Polytechnic High School and the multiple pathways to graduation building that are in design. Modernization of the Jefferson High School that we have, $60 million for the Center for Black Student Excellence, and also funds for planning and design of Cleveland High School and Wilson High School. With Jefferson, Cleveland, and Wilson, that will round out all of the nine comprehensive high schools within PPS. This bond also includes almost $200 million of educational improvements, and those include technology improvements, curriculum purchases and improvements, and improvements to our special ed classrooms and facilities. We continue with health and safety work with about $217 million that is primarily targeted towards roof replacements, mechanical system upgrades, security improvements throughout the district, seismic improvements, and ADA upgrades as well. This bond allocates about $12 million for future capacity improvements. We anticipate with some of the initiatives that are going on in the district right now, a need for additional capacity within our buildings or moving capacity within our sites. We've dedicated some funds for that. And additionally, we've got about $150 million for administrative, administration costs and program contingency that will ultimately be allocated and spent in one of those other categories of work. So again, that totals a little over $1.2 billion. Any questions on that?
No.
All right, thank you.
With that, we'll start with our prepared questions, and following that, if there's any public comment, we will take that at the end of the meeting. And I have the first question. The board originally had considered three options for the size of this bond measure and the project list. The bond ended up kind of with a fourth option that was larger and contained more projects. What factors went into the decision and what public input did this choice reflect? How did that, how did this choice reflect public input?
Great, well, thanks for the question. Again, this is Andrew Scott, Board Member from Zone 1, and I'll go ahead and take a shot, and then Dan can fill in any details I might have missed. And I think it's, you know, it's a really good question, and I'm glad Dan gave some of that overview, because, you know, it's been a long process to get here. And a lot of the work, frankly, probably most of the technical work occurred, you know, before I got on the board about a year ago. But with those 2012 and 2017 bonds, right, the district was beginning to make progress on this long-range facility plan. And I think for each one of those, you know, there were decisions made in terms of focusing, you know, again, on high schools first, and then in 2017, there was the real focus on safety and lead and seismic, et cetera. And so for this bond, what we did about a year ago as a board was, you know, lay out a process. And we created a bond committee of the board that met pretty routinely. I think we had 15 meetings total over the last nine months or so, you know, to review what all the different options were. And, you know, to this question, we did, we actually brainstormed on a lot of different options in terms of what this bond can look like. I think we started thinking, well, maybe we finish all three high schools, realized that that was very, you know, expensive and would be challenging, but would also have crowded out some of the other things we needed to do as a district. And so I think what we really spent the last year doing was trying to find that balance, right? How do we continue the long-range facility plan and specifically focus on the high schools while also doing some of those other projects that are really needed? I think you know this, you know, dealing with governments throughout Volna County, but, you know, our overall capital needs far exceed what we can do in one bond. And that's one of the things that I am really excited about, is that the district already has this plan in place that really goes out decades, right, to sort of fix all the capital projects, and this is one more step in that. So very specifically to your question about these options, you know, we began holding these public meetings last fall. I had a number of meetings throughout the year to discuss, you know, the different bond impacts, the variables, talked about the overall facility and educational needs in the district, some of those guiding documents that Dan talked about. We talked about different cost estimates for different components of it. We also gained input from community and stakeholders during those meetings. And, you know, what we ended up doing was coming up with those three options we went out to the community with. What we heard back pretty loud and clear was a desire to be aggressive. And that was accompanied both in our public listening sessions and also some polling we did. There was really widespread community support for a sizable bond. And so what we ended up focusing in on was Jefferson and the Center for Black Student Excellence, along with some of the educational accessibility improvements that were talked about, and also some of the health and safety improvements. And so beginning to sort of, you know, eat away at those backlogs as well as continuing the high school plan. So that's really why, once we heard all that feedback as a board, we got back together. And I think, you know, combining that with COVID, which highlighted our need for technology, right? So that was something that was clearly there. And then really, the, um, these cries for social justice and Black Lives Matter, I think also highlighted what had been a conversation we were having and really brought that to the fore. And I think as a board, we decided this was the moment to really take a step forward on both of those things as well. So that's where we ended up with the $1.2 billion package.
So you would say that the public would see their input on this final result, then?
Yeah, I think, I think, yes, I mean, that, I was surprised at the strength both in the poll and also what we heard from voters. And I will tell you, the calls specifically around Jefferson and the Center for Black Student Excellence, I got a lot of emails and very, 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 very passionate about the need that now's the time to move forward on that. And frankly, you know, we probably should have done that in 2012. And so we're already a little bit late, but I feel good about that it's included and that we're going to make progress on it.
Thank you, Andrew.
I have a quick follow-up, and I apologize if this is remedial, I just don't remember, but is this the largest bond in the region's history?
I believe the answer is yes, but I don't know that for sure.
I think that's right, because I think the 2016 bond was the largest one at that time, and I don't think that we've had one larger since then.
I think that's right, one of the things I'll add, and maybe Amy was about to say, I don't know, but, you know, one of the principles the board has had going into this process is that we keep the tax rate the same at $2.50 per thousand. And so one of the variables that we spent a lot of time with was, do we go out for a bond now and then wait eight years? Or do we go out for a bond now and wait two years? Or do we go out for a bond now and wait four years? And all of those, you know, we were able to size different things, and we have some flexibility there. But one of our overarching goals that we've maintained, and this bond will maintain, is keeping that tax rate the same. So it is the largest bond, at least I believe it's the largest bond in the region's history, but also one that won't raise taxes above what voters have already approved.
Thank you, I have the next, I have the next question. Building off the 2012 and 2017 bonds, what lessons has the board and the district learned from those first two bond measures? And how have those lessons impacted this bond measure?
Yeah, so I think I'll take this one as well and let staff fill in with any details. So I think it's a great question and a really important question. And I'll just say personally, one of the reasons that I ran to become a School Board Member last year was around the bonds, and actually both positive and negative. I've been doing infrastructure and public infrastructure for a long, long time in my career. And as an outsider watching the district, Portland Public Schools is one of the few governments that has a long-range facility plan and a financing mechanism that they've put in place to do it. We have a lot of governments that have those plans in place and have aspirations, but very few that have done, I think, what PPS has done, which is pass these bonds in 2012 and 2017 to increase the tax rate and now have a plan if we can maintain that. And it's going to take a long time, but it took a long time to dig this infrastructure hole. It's going to take a long time to dig out. You know, I can say, and I'm sad to say, that's not something that the city of Portland has, that's not something that Metro has, it's not something for sure the state of Oregon or the federal government has. So I was excited to both be able to contribute to that and help the district move forward. And there were also some issues that came up, right, in the 2017 bond in particular. And I wanted to sort of be on the board to make sure that we had put some of those safeguards and internal controls in place to make sure that we could avoid those going forward. And so, you know, we are really thankful to the voters for having passed those, and I think we owe them from a public trust perspective, recognizing that when we do hit those bumps in the road, when we do have those issues, that we've taken corrective action. And so, you know, those types of challenges come, I mean, they're varied. You see these in all different governments in terms of overall scope and cost and schedule of projects. And what we've done since then in terms of putting different structures in place to insist and assist in sort of understanding the health of the bond program, understanding the causes and impacts. We've created, as I mentioned, well, actually, I didn't mention this, we created the Bond Subcommittee this last year. We created and had Board Member participation in early project planning efforts around these design advisory committees that are meeting with the different communities to design these projects. All master project, all major project master plans are approved by the board. Significant deviations to scope, schedule, or budget come back for board approval as well. I mentioned the Subcommittee, and then engage in this robust and continual community feedback loop. Some other things I would mention, we brought in outside cost estimators to help sort of verify that the cost estimates the district has put forward for these projects are as sound as they can be. You know, we recognize that with all projects, right, it's always an estimate. And I think what we saw coming out of 2017 with some of the cost inflation, we've seen that in every government. And I think knowing that cost inflation is an estimate, we need to make sure we've got robust contingencies in place, so this bond includes those significant contingencies. Bond spending is audited by an outside auditor that we bring in. And we also have our Bond Accountability Committee, which meets regularly to review existing bond spending and also weigh in on this package as well. So I'm really confident that we've put safeguards in place, both internal controls and external safeguards, to make sure that we know as much as we can. That said, we also know that things will change, and I think we owe it just to be really transparent about that. And as cost estimates change, make sure that we're really clear about the value engineering we're doing on projects when we're using contingency. And I think that's what some of our outside groups will hold us accountable to.
Director Scott?
Thank you.
Excuse me, Harmony, I think one thing I would add, one thing I would add to answer that question is that with the external performance auditing that Andrew mentioned, whenever there are concerns or really they're not even efficiencies, those audits have been really quite clean. The district has a pretty impressive record of addressing all the concerns that have been raised in the past. So I would encourage you to look at that most recent audit, which we just received within the last month, and it goes through how the district has responded to the issues that arose in that last cycle. So it is kind of evidence of this continuous improvement cycle.
I think you answered my planned follow-up fairly well in terms of how you're addressing voters about the cost overruns, but I'll give you a chance, if there's anything else you want to say, and kind of put on the record to say to voters about the cost overruns that happened in the last bond measure and how you're addressing them.
Yeah, no, and I would just go back to reiterate. So it's making sure that we've got the best construction inflation estimates available today, that we've got outside cost estimators making sure that the estimates we are moving forward with are realistic, that we've built sufficient contingencies in to the overall system. And, you know, I'm confident that we've done that. You know, but again, recognizing these are multi-year plans, and, you know, you know from other governments. I mean, we saw tremendous cost inflation in our Metro bond projects and City Portland bond projects, you know, state of Oregon as well, that have led, you know, to a lot of adjustments. And I think that, you know, the district has now put in place, I think, everything we can, and will continue to monitor ongoing basis changes in that environment.
Thank you.
This is Mark, I've got the next question. We've been at a very high level, very macro here, talking about the larger system. We'd now like to ask a question about a specific project, one of your modernization projects, Benson High School. Can you please update us on the status of the high school modernization work? And what work is yet still to be completed? And how will the work be impacted if, and I know you have had a wonderful record of getting your bonds passed, but if for some reason this one should not, how would that work be impacted at Benson?
Thank you for the question, I believe I'm the one responding on this one. Marina Cresswell, I'm the Senior Director of the Alphabet School Modernization. When we talk about the Benson High School project, we have, we use it as an umbrella for four different kind of smaller parts below that. So I'm going to talk about each of those parts. It's the Benson High School main building, the MPG building on the Benson campus, and then our two swing sites that we'll be utilizing while construction is underway. Those swing sites are at the Marshall Campus and at Kenton. So the work that is already complete, the Benson High School main building recently completed their design development phase, and they've received landes approval from the Historic Landmarks Commission. They have completed an extensive assessment of existing building conditions, and during that investigative work, they've also done some minor improvements. For the MPG building, the master plan has been approved by the Board of Education, and schematic design started at the end of August. For the swing sites, we have completed roughly half or a little bit more than half of the modifications that will be needed at Marshall to accommodate Benson students and programs. We've also completed some draft construction documents for an additional outbuilding that's going to be necessary to include their auto and construction programs. The Marshall Swing Site will be housing Benson High School, Pioneer, and Virtual Squad scholars. The Kenton Swing Site, our secondary swing site, will house Dart Clinton, the Alliance at Benson, and Reconnection Services. We have completed construction, draft construction documents for that site as well. Work that remains to be completed, we are scheduled to complete permit documents by December for Benson High School main building. We will be negotiating the GMP amendment to the CMGC construction contract in early 2021 with permit issuance and start of construction scheduled for summer of 2021. Construction will take roughly three years, the school opening is scheduled for fall of 2024. The MPG building is at schematic design in the design phase. They're earlier in the design process in the main building, but they don't require as long to construct. After they complete design development, construction documents permitting, and construction procurement, the construction for that building will start closer to 2023, but still be complete for the fall of 2024 opening with the Benson main building. We do need to do additional renovations for occupancy at both Marshall and Kenton Swing Sites. Those need to be completed before we move the Benson High School and affiliated programs into them in fall of 2021.
So lots of work. Oh, I just wanted to follow, kind of get the end of this question talked about a little bit, which is lots of work going on, lots of progress being made. But if the bond, or I'm sorry, the ballot measure does not pass, what's the plan to finish the work?
The board passed Resolution 5780 that if the bond measure does not pass, a full faith and credit law will be used to fund the completion of the project.
Thank you.
This is Margot Norton, I also have a specific project question, but it is not a project we have talked about before in the previous bonds. And that is the project that was added after Option 3 to the final measure, the Center for Black Student Excellence. Director Scott talked a little bit about that, but could you give us a fuller picture of that project? What are the origins, how was the public involved in the planning? And then we'll go from there, I have some additional questions.
Thank you, this is Jonathan Garcia, Chief Engagement Officer here at PPS. So for as long as our communities have been fighting for civil rights, equitable access to public education has long been a rallying cry in the fight for racial justice. So building on that legacy of advocacy for black children here in Portland and catalyzed by the social movement for black lives this summer and the ongoing movement for black lives, Black Portland Community Leader during public input sessions put forth the concept of the Center for Black Student Excellence, envisioned and diverse endeavors to center the experience, promote opportunities, accelerate outcomes, and to celebrate the achievements of Portland's black children, and which was reinforced by many in the community who participated in the community sessions and focus groups and surveys. This new collective impact effort channels the decades of visionary leadership and culturally responsive and pedagogically sustaining approaches of community-based nonprofits like Self-Enhancement, Inc., Kairos Pizza X, and among other Black-led culturally-specific organizations here in Portland. This emerging concept, community-led concept, seeks to unify and elevate the educational experience of Portland's black children and their families, connecting us constellation of community schools such as Boise Elliott-Humble Elementary, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary, Harriet Tubman Middle School, Jefferson High School, and Black-led, community-based organizations in the Albina neighborhood. Together, the Center for Black Student Excellence and the Jefferson High School rebuild will rally students, families, and community stakeholders to develop a coherent set of strategies that will positively impact student achievement and outcomes while affirming black student identity, and will include promoting and supporting culturally responsive and sustaining teaching and learning from cradle to career. We believe that this investment supports the schools in the heart of what was once the Black Albina community and will serve as a concrete, literally and figuratively, investment in our Black communities. It will reinforce and anchor our schools as centers of our communities and help create the conditions for moving the needle on the stubborn inequities that our Black students continue to experience under our watch.
Thank you, so since you brought up concrete, the materials that we looked at suggested that the $60 million was for planning, design, and phased construction. So I would like to know how much construction will be done under this bond? And do you have an estimate of the full build-out cost for this particular project?
A really great question, I'll start, and then maybe our Chief Operating Officer can weigh in. I think the beauty of this endeavor and the moment that we're in is that we're really turning I think the beauty of this endeavor and, and, and the moment that we're in is that we're, we're really turning. Turning to our community to help shape what that looks like. And so I think that's the, you know, the trickiness of, of this moment and this, and this, this opportunity in front of our voters. We have an opportunity to say, we believe in our black children and in our blacks, in our, our schools that serve our black kids. And we want to, we want to bring our community alongside to help us design and create what those possibilities look like. So again, really, how do we, how do we connect the consolation of schools? Both as built environments, so it might look like rebuilding aspects of, of those buildings, it might look, look like rebuilding. A standalone building, I think all of those are on the table. As, as we collectively envision with our community, what this could look like, Dan, do you want to add anything there?
Yeah, I appreciate it, I think Jonathan hits it on the head in that this is an opportunity and it's, and it's unique. It's different than some of the other scopes of work that are in this bond and have been in our other bonds. And that the, the scope is yet to be defined in many ways, it's not a specific site, it's not a specific building. So the emphasis is on the community engagement and on the planning. And that effort will, will deliver what exactly the hard capital improvements that go in place are. Where it's easy to quantify that with a roof replacement, for example, and something that takes this much engagement and key involvement. It's just earlier in that phase before we can identify exactly what that built environment will look like.
Follow up. Since you have spent some of your time this evening talking about transparency. And keeping faith with the voters, I think Andrew knows Metro's promises made, promises kept motto. Is your community expecting to see this center? When? I mean, I think Director Scott mentioned that it's in this bond, it probably should have been in the previous bond. But since planning and design aren't done and since 60 million isn't going to handle construction.
Sure, so I.
What can the voters expect?
I will connect it to, again, I think, I think it's important to connect the Center for Black Excellence. To the rebuild of Jefferson, right, we, we have to think about this as a constellation of schools that we're supporting. And, and that's really the endeavor, so, so when, when our, when our voters will, you know, look at what's being built. The first stage of that, that you will begin to see is a Jefferson rebuild. That's connected to this broader constellation of support, it might be a standalone. Building and it might be that we need to rebuild or rebuild aspects of Tubman or whatnot, so I think. So Jefferson will be the first. Kind of living expression of the investment in our, in our. Black student excellence and, and really continue with, with the, the rest as we explore that with our, our broader community.
And you, you know, I'll just, I'll just jump in here, Commissioner Norton, because I think your, your question's a really good one. And to, to, to be, to be really frank, I, I think we are changing things a little bit and I, I think we're changing along with some of the expectations in society. I mean, one of the things that we've learned. Over years is, is the need for co-creation with the community and, and I think that. To be really frank, mistakes that, that government has made in the past is, is having, you know. Behind the scenes staff, people such as myself, you know, develop these ideas that then we sort of, we sort of put out and say, hey, you know, please pass this. And, and we really are trying to flip that around a little bit with the Center for Black Student Excellence and say. Look, this is an important investment, we have some concepts, right, about what we want to do, they're, they're district concepts and they're also community concepts. But we really need to take this, we need to see, you know, hopefully there's support in the community for it and then go back to the community again and say. Let's continue to build this and let's continue to develop it and, you know, that's not the way government has traditionally worked. But I think it's actually something government needs to do a lot more of. And we see that with some other projects, you know, in, in the region, I'm thinking outside of PPS, but I think this is an opportunity for PPS to show. That we, we can co-create with the community as well and be transparent in that process and deliver something at the end of that.
And I think the only thing I would add to that, Director Scott, is, you know, for, for, for our black community, participation in the design is. Is as, as more, as important or even more important than the brick and mortar, so I think. Really participating and helping design the future of what. Public education should look like for, for all of our students, every one of our students, but in particular our black students, it's going to be particularly important.
Thank you.
I, I have a guess, a quick follow up, I'm just having trouble visualizing. Is this a building for the students or is this a building for the support for the students?
This, the, the center for, I, I got, I think the, the easiest way for me to describe it, the Center for Black Excellence. So when you think about center, think about center as this little c and the big C. I think the little c is again. In the center of our Portland community, the Albina community, the constellation of schools, Harriet Tubman. Boise Elliott, Dr. Martin Luther King, Jefferson, but it's also going to potentially be a center. A, a lived expression of, of a continuum for students. Of course, this is meant to, to educate our, our young people, right, this is going to be a classroom experience, a school experience. That, that, that is in the heart of our community.
I have a, I have a follow up, so I think, I understand how the, the bond is the capital expenditures to. To support the building of this connected network, whether that's at Jefferson or at all of these other schools. In our historically black neighborhoods, but I'm. That is one piece of that really programmatic idea, so I'm interested if there's any thought or. Planning being done around paying for the operating costs associated with the expansion of that kind of. A program, right, like the, if it, if this is a conceptual idea, I understand how the bond is going to pay for the. The physical aspects of that, right, the, the new roof or playgrounds or whatever that looks like. To support our black students, but there, there are programmatic aspects and operating costs that go along with that. And I'm, I'm interested in, I know that's likely to evolve as well, but. In, in lean budget years, like we're experiencing at the moment and are likely to see for the next several. I'm just curious what the, what the thoughts are around that operating, operating cost.
Sure, I think, again, I, I will, I would just highlight that, I think. Part of the beauty of, of this project and this endeavor in this moment in time is. Our, our opportunity as a public agency to, to come alongside our community, particularly our communities of color. Namely our black communities to, to think about what those operational things are, I mean, I could sit here and, and develop a set of strategies. But I don't live, don't have the lived black experience. Or the Portland experience, and so I think it's going to be important that we bring our communities, our students, our families. Together to really outline those operational strategies and those curricular strategies. And I think, once we have a real determination of, of what the community really so desires for, for our, for the future of our schools and our programmatic. Nature, then I think that's where we're going to have a, a, a lot more of those conversations, Harmony, about, you know, what, what are the costs, right? And, and I think the beauty here is that the, we have partners up and down, you know, our nonprofit partners, our, our business philanthropic partners. And our, our government agencies in the region all committed to, to really living up to this lived expression of, of supporting our, our black families and our black students.
Well, and in Harmony, I would add that our dollars follow our students too, right? We receive resources for operations based on the number and types of kids that we have and so. So when we are moving kids to a, a school as, as the enrollment in a school. Or a facility is our program, then those dollars tend to follow those kids, so. So there, there are, you know, operational dollars available for all of our students.
Definitely, and I think, I think it's also important, I think, you know, and I think. Ray, Danny Ledesma, who's our Senior Advisor on Racial Equity can really speak to our broader investment areas around. Supporting black student achievement across the district through our racial equity and social justice portfolio. Of partnerships, as this body knows, when I, we, you reviewed our, our budget. You know, we did see a 65% increase in contracts to racial equity. Social justice organizations, so, you know, we, we are living into that commitment in, in a number of ways.
Yeah, I think it's a good, it's a good reminder that as urgent as these things are, urgency can sometimes be the. The enemy of good and responsive work. So I, I appreciate your patience with our questions about the timelines and all of these things. I know this is a ongoing process and it, the community investment is, is at the heart of it and I appreciate that focus. And with that, I have, I have the next question that I think is somewhat similar. Would you please, a slightly different topic, but. Would you please elaborate on the purpose and location of the multiple pathways to graduation program? And what construction on that is funded by this bond measure?
Yes, the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Program will be located in a new separate building that's actually on the Benson High School campus. The purpose of this building, what we call the MPG building. Is to accommodate the existing multiple pathways to graduation programs that are currently operating within Benson High School. Including Alliance, Reconnection Services and Dart Clinton. It also includes the relocation of the Alliance program in Meek to the same building. The modernization of the existing Benson High School main building does not include, excuse me. Bringing these programs back into the main building. Because it's been recognized that, that these students need a facility designed more specifically for their learning needs. The MPG building will also house some shared services with Benson High School such as the Teen Parent Center. And the available 2017 bond funding for the Benson Modernization Project, which includes the MPG building. Is being utilized for the design phase of it. But in order to move forward with construction, we will need additional funding. Whether it's from the new bond measure or from the full faith and credit law that we discussed earlier.
Thank you, I'm interested, so multiple pathways to graduation, are there similar? Programmatic components at the other high schools as well beyond Benson? No, that's a focused. Set of students that are pursuing alternatives to our traditional. Graduation process.
This is where the bulk of them are currently housed, is it Benson High School?
Okay. Okay, that makes sense to me, thank you.
I have the next question and we're changing gears completely now. So in the 2017 bond measure, the district had included 150 million for health and safety improvements to mitigate lead asbestos and radon hazards. And to upgrade alarm and sprinkler systems. We wanted to just follow up on the status of that work and to learn if the 150 million covered all of the work or if not, how much more has been identified? And what will it cost, and I guess also if there is additional work to be done, if you've identified kind of where that's going to be paid for from.
Yeah, that's a great question, this is Daniel again, and consideration of time, I'll try to answer this one quickly, but happy to answer any follow up questions as well. So we're happy to report that the district has made a lot of really good progress on the health and safety components of the 2017 bond. The bond language specifies that the district spent 150 million dollars on eight different health and safety scopes of work. In addition to the bond, we received a grant for 8 million dollars that also went towards health and safety improvements. In, in, or to date, we are well on our way to spending 158 million dollars. And also reaching all the goals that we had for the number of projects that we would hit. So we don't have any concerns that we're going to be able to meet the, the goals of the 2017 bond. In planning for the 2020 bond, we recently completed a facilities condition assessment. And that assessment helped us estimate what our total need is in health and safety. And that total need as well in excess of 2 billion dollars. And that is why we see in this bond and anticipated in, in future bonds as the district looks to go out for them. We will continue to see health and safety improvements as part of that scope of work, that is significant, that is important. And it is large scopes of work that we continue to pursue.
Wow, okay, that's great, thank you, 2 billion dollars is a very big number. Do you have a sense of? I mean. I guess what I'm wondering is, you, you know, the health and safety concerns that were addressed with 150 million dollars definitely seemed like. You know, the district had been playing catch up to, you know, a lot of deferred, you know, maintenance or deferred care on facilities. Do you feel like with, you know, the recent, most recent bond and this upcoming bond? That the district has really kind of turned a corner and is being a lot more proactive about handling those things? So that we don't end up in, you know, a health and safety kind of deficit unforeseen in the future?
That's a, that's a great question and I, and yes, I do believe that that's what we've done with the district and it's also, I think, in accompanying with other efforts as well. We mentioned earlier that the district has a long range facilities plan, we're in the process of updating that long range facilities plan right now. Anticipate having that done in 2021. Additionally, we're working on a five year capital plan. So that will target specific improvements over a five year period that looks to drive down these deficiency costs, either with bond funds. Or other resources that we have. But I think the district has done a great job over the last number of years of really being intentional about understanding what the deficiencies are. And putting plans in place to address them over the long term, because it will take a long time to address all of them.
Great, thank you.
In the. Ballot explanatory material submitted to the Elections Department, we noticed. What seemed to be a more specific discussion or, or mention of flexible, adaptive, special education learning spaces. And technology tools. And it made us wonder, I mean, we had been assuming that the. Space requirements. The ADA requirements had been, was being met in all of the new construction all along from the initial bond. So I guess I'm asking for you to at least confirm that. That it has been addressed in Grant High School, with, with the new, the buildings that have been completed, including the elementary school. And then secondly. What is planned specifically in this measure for those adaptive learning spaces?
That's a great question, a couple of parts there, so let me make sure I answer them appropriately. So all of our new construction projects, our modernizations do meet current codes, so our, our Grant High Schools, our Franklin's and our Roosevelt's all meet current ADA requirement. Very few of our other buildings in the district do because of the age of the buildings and the code changing over time. So in this November bond, there's a couple of different components, one, there is an ADA component. And what the goal is there is to continue to bring the district closer into conformance by removing barriers for accessibility. So I think it's roughly 30 or 35 million dollars, I can't recall offhand. So that will continue our trajectory towards becoming fully accessible district wide. There's also a component to look at our special education spaces. In our facilities condition assessment, we have an educational evaluation component. And that looked at the deficiency of some of our special ed classrooms. So we have, I'll say a preliminary scope of work of how we think we will address those spaces. But as we get further into design and have further conversations, especially with the users of the space, we will, we will further develop that scope of work. To ensure that the improvements we put in our special ed classrooms meet what their needs are.
I want to excuse, that's for just a moment, I wanted to give us the 10 minute warning. Our school board of directors is scheduled to start their regular board meeting at 6pm, thank you.
Thank you.
David Behringer, Chair, I would be willing to let this question go. I think we've talked about many elements and in the interest of time, that would leave us two more questions, if that's okay with you.
Sure, that sounds fun, Mark, thank you. So then I have the next question. And when bonds are popular and your bonds tend to be, they can be issued with a premium. And I was wondering if any of your previous bonds had generated a premium and if so, how that money was used? If the district is anticipating a premium on these bonds and how they will be used?
Previous bonds have generated varying premiums, it really depends on the market conditions. And those premiums are typically applied into that category that. Dan Young described as program contingency. Those premiums, similar to any kind of interest earnings or other revenue sources. Are essentially used to support existing bond projects that may need additional financial support. Or to fund new bond related scopes of work, that is the main purpose of that program contingency. For future premiums, we don't typically forecast. For future premiums, we don't typically forecast those because the financial market can really vary widely in what we anticipate. So we try not to anticipate too much.
Sure. Were the previous premiums significant or were they just modest?
I, I think it would depend on your definition of significance.
Okay, relative to the size of the bond?
There were several million dollars in premiums. They were put, as I said, towards, you know, projects, existing bond projects or new bond-related scopes of work.
Okay.
Dan Young, I think you can probably answer this question, but in 2012, I believe it was 55, about $55 million in bond premium. And in addition to contingency, it was also used to absorb costs on some increased scopes of work.
Yeah, that's correct. It was right around that amount.
Okay, great. Thank you. James? You have the last question?
I do. Thank you. So we're wondering, to the extent that you can answer this question, how the board is reaching out to the public about the bond measure? And with, especially with current economic uncertainties, the pandemic, the aftermath of the fires, the civil rights uprising that we're in the middle of, how confident the board is that the bond measure is going to pass?
If that's just floating out there, I'm happy to respond since it was asked of the board.
Amy, I had to ask Director DePass to respond to that question earlier. Michelle, are you ready to respond? Michelle, are you here with us?
Director DePass, I think you're muted, it looks like.
Thank you for that. I was muted. I'm here, present. So I'm prepared to respond. So yeah, so the two-part question, how the board's reaching out to the public about the bond measure, I'll answer that first. And that's, board members have been involved over in the early bond planning project engagement opportunities, including participating in several conceptual design advisory groups for Jefferson High School, Cleveland High School, and Wilson. The board has held over a dozen public meetings and invited public comment. And board members have been involved in community survey efforts, virtual town halls, and public events. And that, those are the formal engagements, and the informal engagements are happening in grocery store aisles and, you know, out, out at parks and, and that type of thing. So we've been involved in, in hearing back from community, and what we've heard is this is a great time to put this bond on the ballot because it's responsive to COVID and responsive to Black Lives Matter. The second part of your question had to do about how the confidence in how, in that the board measure will pass. There's been some initial polling that showed that there was, there was very high support, over 50%, maybe even 60% for the bond in general at the higher amount. And then once the Center for Black Excellence and Jefferson High School, questions were asked about, specifically about those projects, the, those numbers increased. The support for the bond increased once the public, likely voters, heard about those two projects. So, you know, in general, the feedback from the community is strongly supported, not only proceeding with the bond in November, but also engaging, you know, encouraging a larger bond package. The community recognizes the significant capital needs of the district and understands the only way to improve the physical teaching and learning environment is to continue with the PPS's long-term capital improvement plan. And community conversations and polling data have supported the proposed bond package as presented.
I've got a follow-up question, can I ask, Michelle?
Quick, Mark.
Of course. Okay, so this is the third in a series of bonds. And how does your polling compare to previous two?
That's a great question that I'm not really prepared to answer. I don't know how the polling worked on the other two. Amy? Can you speak to that?
You know, so the, the threshold for go or no-go is generally around 55%. And so the polling that we did for this bond was just a little bit higher than it was the last time. A little bit more comfortable feeling. And as Michelle said, we know that that, that sentiment only was compounded as we started to talk to the community more about the investments in a Center for Black Student Excellence.
Great. Thank you. So that concludes our, our formal questions. Craig, did anyone sign up to make any comments?
There. My microphone is bouncing around. No, no one has signed up to make any comments.
Okay, great. So we're at the end of our meeting. Thank you all for participating and your thoughtful comments to our, our questions. And with that, I will now close the hearing. And again, thank you for your attendance and participation.